Everyone and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, January 14th, 2019, our first council meeting of 2019. Apologies for starting a little bit late. We have our Arctic Winter Games bid is being evaluated today, and so a number of members of council, myself and some staff members were involved in that out at the Eastlake Center. And so here's 2022. As I said, I think our bid is obviously going to be way, way better than Wood Buffalo Fort McMurray's bid. But we'll leave that to the international community to decide. But that's why we started a little bit late. So thank you very much for the members of the public that were here for a council meeting. With that, we'll call our meeting to order, and I'd ask everyone in attendance to join us in singing Oh Canada. What a great way to start off the new year. Thanks very much to alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country. We'll move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes, Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I make a motion to approve this city council meeting held Monday, December 17th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing anybody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. And that motion carries as well. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for any community member to come and speak to council on any community-related matter, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. And we do have a public hearing with respect to the sign by law. And so if there's anybody that was here this evening to speak to the sign by law, then you'll come up in just a couple of minutes here. But was there anybody that was here hoping to speak to council about any other community matter? We actually do have some public here excited to start off 2019 with an exciting council meeting. And so, but I don't see anybody rushing the stage or the podium to start. So I would just remind the community that this opportunity exists at every regular city council meeting. We do always appreciate if people let us know ahead of time if they're planning on attending, but it absolutely isn't required. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is for bylaw C-1260-100, the signed by law review. I would acknowledge Councillor Palat before I call this meeting, this public hearing to order. Councillor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just, I would like to deem that I have a conflict in this one and would like to move myself before we get going.
Okay, thanks very much. So Councillor Palat will declare a conflict of interest and will leave the council chambers. Thanks very much, Councillor Palat, for catching us. Before we got started there, I would call this public hearing to order and would look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This presentation is regarding the sign regulations contained in the city's land use by law, C-1260. In November of 2014, council directed administration to undertake a comprehensive review of the sign regulations. In March of 2016, council adopted the proposed amendments. After that, in March of 2018, administration received a letter on behalf of six local sign companies requesting a further review of the sign regulations. A delegation presented a letter to the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee, and then administration was directed to review the amendments for council's consideration. Between June and October, administration discussed the sign regulation amendments request for the sign industry and proposed solutions to negotiate that would allow for a reasonable opportunity for sign industry growth while maintaining strong and effective sign regulations. In December, the proposed regulations were presented to council, and at that time, the public hearing was recessed and is, was, went to the IPS committee and is back here today to be discussed again. The proposed amendments fall into the following categories: third-party advertising, electronic message displays, fascia signs, billboards, and miscellaneous efficiencies. With regard to third-party advertising, third-party advertising refers to signs that advertise goods, products, or services for businesses that are not located on the premise of the sign. The current regulations allow for third-party advertising only on billboard and event signs. The proposed amendments to third-party advertising, if adopted, would allow freestanding signs to also contain third-party advertising, subject to certain criteria. The criteria that there would be subject to is that they could not be located within 100 meters of another freestanding sign with advertising third-party content. Must be located within 300 meters and on the same side as an arterial road of a business organization or event to which the sign refers. Shall only display electronic message displays on the portion, on a portion of the freestanding sign. Our third-party advertising can only be displayed on the electronic message portion of the freestanding sign. And third-party advertising shall not be located in the CC Central Commercial District. It's important to note that opening up freestanding signs would change the reason for advertising and could potentially result in proliferation of signs, and that's why these specific regulations are being proposed. Electronic message displays refers to signs that operate high-output light admitting diodes, LED, to display advertising rather than the more conventional methods of paper or plastic. Any change to the EMD standards were carefully considered by our traffic engineering department in line with the TAC standards. Current sign regulations allow EMDs to consume 25% of the signable area of a freestanding sign and require a minimum six-second frame duration. The proposed amendments to EMDs would allow electronic message displays to consume 50% of the signable area of a freestanding sign and would allow the city's traffic engineering to impose longer frame durations for safety reasons. Fascia signs are signs that are placed on the vertical exterior wall of a building. In the current regulations, fascia signs can contain EMD displays are only permitted on the secondary wall of a building. Although these restrictions serve the purpose of limiting proliferation of fascia signs contained in EMDs, these restrictions also led to some unintended consequences for buildings containing more than one primary building wall. The proposed amendments to fascia signs, if adopted, will allow fascia signs to operate electronic displays on primary building walls, subject to specific criteria. Billboards. Current sign regulations restrict billboard size to a maximum of 6.1 by 3.1 meters. The proposed amendments to the billboard signs would allow them to have a maximum square footage of 26.28 square meters or 7.3 meters by 3.6 meters. Increased size allows flexibility when designing the frames for the signs. There are other miscellaneous efficiencies. One is two proposed amendments that clarify what a visibility triangle is and how it is measured, and the other clarifies the minimum static frame duration of six seconds to 20 seconds depending on road safety factors. These amendments are in line with council strategic plans in the economy area. Stakeholder engagement took place. The requirements under the municipal government act were followed. There was advertising on the city's webpage, and stakeholder engagement sessions were held with city and administration. In addition, when this amendment went back to the IPS committee, it was advertised on the city's Facebook page. The recommendation is that council give three readings to bylaw C-1260-100. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any questions for administration at this point? Excuse me, from council? Not seeing any. Excuse me. Then we will open up the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This is an opportunity for members of the public that wish to make a comment. First, I would call for anybody that's here to speak in support of the proposed changes. Anybody that's here to speak in support of the proposed changes, I'd ask you to come forward, make your way to the presenter's table, if you just introduce yourselves, for those people that might be watching at home, and for our recording secretary. And welcome, gentlemen.
Hi, Delvin Kossick, representing Driver Media and on behalf of the advertising industry.
Dave Metetuck, representing Speed Pearl Signs.
Welcome, gentlemen. And so by all means, if you had some perspective to share with us, that'd be appropriate now.
The bylaw changes as proposed, we've gone through a lot of due diligence, working with city administration and looking at what was available at the time and some of the challenges that the industry was faced, and came up with the changes to make it a little easier for the industry and for the city of Grand Prairie to regulate the signs that are being brought to market. The digital sign industry brings with it a certain amount of challenges when it comes to designing signs in that they're more modular, and to get those modules to always add up to the sizes that are identified in the bylaws can sometimes be challenging when you're looking at building the frames and the casings and whatnot. So the increase in size allows us to be, provides a bit more flexibility when we're designing those signs. Not that we're going to go to the maximum, but it just gives us a little wiggle room to make it all work and add up.
Yeah.
The other changes voids a lot of variances and a lot of paper overhead that is always coming forward to the city in order for us to get some of the product brought to market. So with that, if you have anything to add?
I do not, not tonight.
Okay. If there's any questions, we're more than happy to address your questions or concerns.
Yeah, thanks very much, gentlemen. So there are a couple of people in the queue. The first is Councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering if you could explain to us again, just so we've got it on record and just to refresh our memory. With the size of signs, this modular configuration, this allowing you guys to hit that 10 by 20, no matter, no matter what size of modules come in, but what are the consequences in terms of, yeah, what are the consequences if you have to go smaller than 10 by 20 because those modules won't let you hit that 10 by 20 exactly?
Well, from a business standpoint, suddenly you have a sign that a static display is, of course, the back side of it is a 10 by 20. And when you put a smaller EMD on the other side, it is very unattractive for one. It also, for our view, our readability in distance, setback from the road becomes more challenging because your copy goes smaller. So it makes it a less desirable sign from a advertising and marketing standpoint, for sure.
Some of it has to do with aspect ratio as well.
Yeah.
To make the aspect ratio fit with the different modules, sometimes you've got to add a little bit here, take a little away there, so that the aspect ratio works out. You've all got widescreen TVs. Sometimes you get the black bar on the top and the bottom of the sides. We're trying to accommodate that so that the aspect ratio of the digital content will fit the boards. So that's why we're looking for the flexibility in the size of the signs. More flexibility than it is anything else.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a couple of clarifications as well. There's a sign over there on 84th. I think you guys installed it here last year, year before, the larger electronic sign. Yeah. So that's the largest sign that we would see in Grand Prairie, and that would fit into the criteria that you guys are proposing.
Are you referring to the superboard?
Yes.
The superboard is an exception to the rule. That was one that was done on a very specific case basis and site-specific. So that one is a bit of an edge case that wouldn't really fall into this category.
Okay.
Benchmark of off the 10 by 20 standard billboard size, not the superboard.
Okay.
Superboard is the largest format out there.
Yeah. And that's not, to be clear, the superboard dimensions are not covered in that increase in size. That's, that's a whole nother, nother kettle of fish, for sure.
No, that's why I asked the question. I just needed some clarification there. I appreciate that. And you're okay with the proposals? Obviously, you guys helped draw them up, and...
As an industry, we, we work collaboratively to come to the table, present a number of wishes that we wanted. Working with city administration, we compromised, the city compromised, and we came to an agreement on the current revisions as they stand today. And we feel they're a win-win for everybody.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so if there weren't any questions, gentlemen, thanks very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, was there anybody else here to speak in favor of the proposed changes? Not seeing anybody come forward, then we'll open up and ask if there's anybody who wished to speak opposed to the proposed changes. You've sort of seen the routine. If you'd make your way to the front, introduce yourself, the recording secretary, and make yourself welcome. By all means, pull out one of the chairs if that's easier, and absolutely do slide the microphone so it's in the best position for you. And welcome.
Good evening. Happy New Year, Mayor and Council. So I'm the only one here, but that's okay. I remember Grand Prairie as a peaceful, beautiful city. As I drive around the city now...
Sorry, ma'am, and I'll just, you know, but I'll also ask you just to make sure that you state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Susan Schneider, and this is my caregiver, Ashley Hebert.
Thanks very much, Susan.
Thank you. As I drive around now, it's very shocking to see these brightly lit billboards flashing at me. They're extremely loud and just large and distracting, even during the daylight, but during the dark, it's much worse. I find these types of signage very offensive. The Alberta government made history by passing the most comprehensive driving, distracted driving legislation in Canada that restricts the use of handheld cell phones and using other electronic devices while driving. Digital signs are even more distracting than phones since they're like a TV that's never turned off. You can turn off your phone, but the sign gets your attention whether you want it to or not. Signs are distraction, and I don't understand why they're allowed since law enforcement is trying very hard to stop distracted drivers. There's many studies out there that show that drivers make twice as many and longer glances at video signs. Messages are more distracting and require more reading time, therefore more distracting. Digital signs are designed to catch your attention away from driving, and some even say, "made you look." That's what the advertiser wants, of course. It seems very disingenuous for sign advertisers to claim they pose no threat to citizens and drivers. And it's interesting to note, they seem to locate, be located at busy, high-traffic intersections. Digital signs are also known as light clutter, the increased light pollution. They're very bright, aggressive, annoying nuisances and cause stress on the roadways. The glare from the lighting is a public health hazard, especially for the, especially the older you become. Glare light causes loss of contrast in the eye and leads to unsafe driving conditions. Bright flashing lights disfigure Grand Prairie's landscape. They have a direct impact on the image of the community. They do affect the, their location inside affects public health, welfare, and aesthetics of the community. Uncontrolled and unlimited signs adversely impact the image and attractiveness of the community. It's sort of like It's a Wonderful Life I watched at Christmas, when the tranquil Bedford Falls turns, turns into trashy Pottersville with all the flashing lights down the main street. We must ask ourselves, what type of city do you want Grand Prairie to become? Our city values green park spaces and has a huge population of children. I wouldn't want that. I wouldn't want to turn this small-town, child-friendly atmosphere into another glittery Vegas Strip. So digital signs distract from driving, add unnecessary light pollution, and are a disregard to our city. I feel they shouldn't be allowed in the city of Grand Prairie. Despite my opinion, I understand that digital signs are how advertising is done. I'm very surprised to see the sign by law before council again, since it was thoroughly revised in 2016. At that time, even though it included digital signage, it was fair to both industry and community members. The proposal from the sign companies seemed very aggressive. However, the proposed amendments from administration were much better. One concern I have is that signs should not be allowed to be any closer together than they already are. But my biggest concern is that billboards will be allowed to be 44% larger than they currently are. Companies will populate our city with them, and of course, they'll be digital. I have to disagree with administration. They claim there's no risk to these changes. If super billboards are allowed, like the one on the south end of the city, there will be an environmental impact from the light pollution. There would be a social impact in the image of our community, and there would also be an economic impact from distracted driving, potential accidents. I feel that Grand Prairie should not allow super billboards. Overall, the proposed amendments to the sign by law are reasonable, but I request that council reject the one amendment that allows billboards to be larger. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, thanks for coming and speaking to us. I really appreciate when people take the time to do that. I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So is your big concern with increasing size of them, increased light pollution along with the sign being bigger, or is it more than that?
I reviewed the proposed, the amendments clearly. I do feel my only concern, the major concern, is the larger signage, definitely.
But sorry, I'm just, I'm just trying to get at why that's a concern to you as a I heard you say light pollution. So is that because of more light output?
Yes, yes. Larger signs, the one at Ernie's, of course. Everybody complains. We don't want more of those. The one on 84th, we don't want more of those. We have enough digital signage, enough light pollution here. Do we need more? And do we need larger displays of it, especially on roads? I hear a lot of people complain, driving around, "Yeah, that flashed in my face," that kind of thing. We don't need more of them. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Councillor Bressi. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in. Susan, thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And so was there anybody else here that wished to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments to the sign by law? Was there anybody else that wished to speak to the proposed, was there anybody else that wished to speak to the proposed amendments to the sign by law? Don't see anybody else coming forward. So this will be the last opportunity if there's anyone who wished to speak to the proposed amendments to the sign by law. Again, I don't see anybody coming forward, and so we'll close the delegation portion of our hearing. One last opportunity, council, for any technical questions for administration. Councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do have a question for administration that I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. I've heard a very similar concern in size in terms of increased light pollution in our, in our city with these billboards getting bigger. And so I went and I read our land use by law for electronic messages plays. And if I'm understanding right, the limits we put on these electronic billboards have to do with how they increase ambient, ambient lights around, around the billboard. So I'm understanding by increasing the size by 40%, the requirement for what would happen in terms of light pollution would stay the same. Where is, I'm trying to figure out, are we going to see more light pollution in our city by increasing the size of these?
Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. I can see our administration team considering, considering that question.
If it's helpful, I'll say that the part that I'm looking at in the land use by law is section 5, 5.2F.
Maybe while you're pointing that out, would you care to read it out for the rest of us that don't have it at hand?
And what it says is, "A sign containing, containing an electronic message display must not increase the light levels adjacent to the electronic message display by more than three lux above the ambient light level." I'll tell you, it took me a long time on Google to just become more confused by what a lux is.
Ms. Downing, Ms. Hutchinson?
Through the chair, thank you very much. The amount of light that's emitted by the digital signs is actually regulated and controlled in the bylaw, and we specifically put a requirement on nighttime illumination. And this was in viewing the requirements of other municipalities in Alberta, certainly. And I believe that the amount of light that can be emitted is 750 nits, which is candela's per square, candela's per square feet. And that's, that's the source light. With regards to the ambient lights, I don't really have anything to say on that. We're, I've certainly been focused on the amount, how bright these things are, and I've been trying to regulate that. And I would like to acknowledge the, the work of the sign and industry, that they have been shown willing in, to work with us on this. And certainly when we've encountered problems at night, they have been willing to turn them down. I acknowledge that there are a number of grandfathered signs out there that is a little bit more troublesome, but certainly this is going forward, how we can control the brightness of the signs.
Just, just for clarification, so at this stage, administration is focused more on the light output of the sign rather than the impact of the sign on the ambient light in the surrounding area?
In response, thank you. Certainly when we look at the location of the sign, I'm particularly concerned with any sign that faces residential areas. I can think of a number of instances where we've received applications from signs that would face a residential area, and we are more strict on the, in control in that because naturally we don't want to cause disruption to residents. Most of the signs, thankfully, are in commercial or industrial areas. So we would take a second glance if it's facing some residential areas, certainly.
Thank you. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Along these lines regarding the light pollution, how do the, how does the requirement that we have on these signs compare to what we're doing with our street lamps? I understand as we're replacing street lamps, we're doing the ones that go down and don't put any light up. Is the industry doing anything to limit upward light on these lights? And from administration, how would the upward light compare to what the old style streetlights are? Do you know?
Through the chair, that isn't something that I have any knowledge of, or I can't really respond to that. So, sorry.
Okay. And can I, can I direct that question to the, the industry reps who are here? Is there anything that you know of that in manufacturing of these signs is paying attention to the upward light?
Sorry.
Is that possible?
Appreciate the challenge in, in trying to get an industry perspective, but we have closed the public.
Is that point of order? Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, and it would be sort of submission of additional information that nobody else has.
Then I will move on to another question, another bit of a topic here. I appreciated Ms. Schneider's comments about the clutter of these lights, or these, these signs. And I'm not a fan at all, but I understand the economics. I use billboards for my business, and I understand it as contributing to the economy in our city. But the other thing that she did mention, in addition to light pollution, was the distracted driving. And I wonder if administration can cook, administration could comment on how often a digital light is mentioned as a contributing factor to a, an incident in traffic, please? to a, an incident in traffic, please?
Is that an enforcement perspective or a engineering perspective, or both? Maybe we'll start with Mr. Manuel.
Certainly. So, one of the challenges we've had is, so we are aware that, for instance, frame rate changes, like a strobe effect, those sorts of things can have a distracting effect. And certainly, I believe the bylaw speaks to some of those provisions. That being said, some analysis has been underway to determine at the location of the addition of new digital signage, whether there has been a proliferation of collisions at those locations that may or may not be contributed to that. That being said, today, we don't have sufficient information to say absolutely, from a Grand Prairie perspective, that it has. The Collision Reporting Center is actually a, a big piece of that. We've only had that data now since September. Previous to that, the data we were working off of was over three years old, so it was, it was pretty hard to do the cause and effect. But that is something that we are monitoring from this point forward to see if future changes need to be made.
Thank you.
Mr. Manuel. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just another question regarding some of the stuff that's being talked about right now. Is animation and the moving, we have criteria that has to be met in the sign bylaw now, whether it's light or fast-paced. How often, or have we concluded on a timeline when we review this? Is it sign by sign, or is it every two years that we may be reviewing this? Is there any talk in the lunchroom about that kind of stuff?
Clarify, Counselor O'Toole, are you talking about how the city regulates existing signs, or are you talking about animation on all signs?
Animation on all the signs.
So what does the bylaw say with respect to animation or moving video on electronic message displays?
In, in response to that, the bylaw, the existing bylaw, and the, certainly the bylaw going forward, does not allow any animation or special effects in terms of strobing, or you often see dissolving and things like that. That, that will not be allowed for any new signs going forward. I, I accept the fact that we, we do have a handful of signs within the city that were approved before the bylaw came about. I am having discussions with some of those sign owners, and we are trying to bring them on board. But certainly, in, in terms of future signs, that, that will not be allowed on any, any signs.
Thank you very much for your answer. Much appreciated. And I guess just additionally for Counselor O'Toole and, and others that may not have been at the committee meeting where we discussed it, there was support from the sign industry to, for the city to take some additional steps to regulate those bad actors who may not be complying with what our current community standard would be. And administration recommended that actually not be in the sign, the land use bylaw, the sign bylaw, that a more appropriate way might be to deal with that by having a requirement for a business license to operate a sign. That is something that we could, if the city chose to bring in that requirement, it would apply retroactively to anybody who owns and operates an electronic sign. So it would be a way for us to potentially regulate that if council chose to do that. But it's not the subject of anything we're discussing today. So, but it was something that has come up as a, as a challenge. So it wasn't exactly the lunchroom, it was the committee table where we were discussing that. But it is something that I think is top of mind for administration and other council members, certainly. Any other questions for administration? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the business arising. And I would look for a motion for first reading so we can start the discussion. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C twelve sixty dash one hundred, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. So a motion for first reading is the formality to get it onto the table for us to discuss and debate. So there is no discussion and debate on first reading. We'll do that in subsequent readings. Please vote for first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Blackburn, would you care to do second?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would give, move that council give second reading to bylaw C twelve sixty dash one hundred. And speaking briefly to that motion, I would, I, I understand the concerns that some people have regarding the amount of signs that already exist and the, the light and the, the, the challenges that come with those distractions. I guess what I'm looking at from this perspective is that the restrictions that have been designed to go into the bylaw to allow some of the changes, to me, look like there's, there's been a fair amount of work done to ensure that there isn't a greater proliferation of signs. Or I shouldn't say a greater proliferation, but there, there won't be a proliferation of signs that, that would be unreasonable. And, and I think that in terms of, of light and traffic issues, those kinds of situations have been addressed by engineering and reasonably accepted by the sign industry who were proposing the changes. So I think that, that there will be benefit to the sign industry and therefore to our economy, without a lot of the risks that, that some people may fear would be there. So I'm urging that we go ahead and approve this bylaw. Thank you.
Counselor Blackburn, so open for discussion and debate on second reading. Is there anybody else that wishes to enter the discussion? Counselor Pressy?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I know for me, I've got concerns about community aesthetics and proliferation of advertising in our society. So this was me when this first came before us, that I was very skeptical of, but especially the size ones that's been brought up. I got my concerns have been allayed by, I appreciate the need for industry to be flexible, and I understand that they're trying to hit that ten by twenty. That's a standard size, pretty much, pretty much everywhere, not trying to push that bigger and bigger. I think else, something else that I still keep on the fence, and at committee meeting, we heard that the big factor engineers look at when they're looking at size of signs is the vertical width of them. And the vertical width increase is nineteen percent. And so the forty-four percent number really, really scared me. But really, when I started thinking about it, we're looking at a couple of feet this way, a couple of feet this way, and we're looking at a twenty percent increase in terms of the dimension that engineers look at when they're looking at traffic safety. And so that gave me a lot of peace. So I think I'll be a very hard sell if this term, somebody comes back asking for a further increase, because the flexibility argument makes sense to me. Getting that ten by twenty dimension makes sense to me. But the idea of increasing them for the sake of increasing them further, that would be a hard sell for me, but this makes sense, so I'll be supporting this.
Thanks, Counselor Pressy. Any other discussion or debate? I'll just take the opportunity to enter and say that I actually have less concern about the billboard dimensions. My primary concern when we first saw this was with respect to allowing third-party advertising on freestanding signs, on the electronic messaging component of freestanding signs. I think that that starts to change the business case for having a sign. I really appreciate the fact that administration was able to explain the relative constraints that are proposed here. And I, I also believe that it still fundamentally changes the purpose of having a sign where possible. I think it starts to say, "I should have a sign so that I could make money from my sign selling advertising," rather than, "I should have a sign so I can tell people where my business is." Having said that, I support the, the overall package of items that are here. And as I said, the, the relative restrictions that are on freestanding signs with third-party advertising. I think that it's a reasonable compromise when what we're really facing is the impact of changing technology. Electronic message displays were very, very expensive a number of years ago when we started this whole discussion about the sign bylaw. They've come down drastically in price, and it's natural that businesses would want to make more use of them. And I actually really appreciate the iterative process we've gone through on this. I think it's really appropriate, especially when we have rapid change like we've seen in this technology. I wouldn't be surprised for the community, once we start to notice the impact of more electronic message displays on freestanding signs, for people to have more opinions, like Ms. Schneider's, saying that they're concerned about the light pollution. And I would expect that the city would respond by ensuring that we are doing a better job of enforcing any requirements we might have in the land use bylaw around ambient light in the vicinity of the sign or the actual sign, what it's emitting itself. As we start to see more of these, I think it behooves the city to ensure we're regulating them on an ongoing basis to the full extent allowed under the bylaw. So that's all to say, I was concerned. I'm a bit less concerned now. But this will lead to a change that probably will be observable in the community, and we should recognize that. Anybody else wants to be in the discussion? Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I appreciate the comments and concerns, and glad to see that council seems to be in favor of the recommendations. I'm a little bit to the extreme of that in the sense that I believe that a business owner invests in something, they should have the opportunity to make money from that. But I'm, I'm satisfied with where we are today. And the one thing that I would recommend industry to do, if at all possible, would be to work with the surrounding municipalities, because I feel that the concerns that Ms. Schneider has are addressed within our municipality. But there are surrounding municipalities that aren't addressing these concerns. And there are signs in our region that are extremely out of these parameters, and, and they're right on our borders. And sometimes, you know, we need to remind our neighbors that what you do, sometimes you wear other people's mistakes. So I would encourage industry to work with our surrounding municipalities to put these parameters across the region. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Anybody else wish to speak to second reading? Seeing no one in the queue, then I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Blackburn? You'll just have to get your microphone off.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C twelve sixty one hundred at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here. In order for us to have all three readings of a bylaw at the same meeting, we must first approve moving on to that third reading before we actually have it. This motion must pass unanimously. If it does not, then the third and final reading would come back at our subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion and debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Not seeing anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and does carry unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C twelve sixty one hundred, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that handles all of our business related to bylaw C twelve sixty one hundred. We can let Counselor Palat know that we've concluded that business, and he can come back and join us. I think Counselor Friesen has maybe gone to find him. And so we will move on in our agenda to item seven point one, borrowing bylaw C thirteen ninety-one, long-term debt consolidation and refinancing. This is a piece of unfinished business at a council meeting, I think, before Christmas. We had given first reading, and so we're here for second and potentially third reading. I would look for a motion to get this on the floor for second reading. Counselor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the second reading. Give the second reading to bylaw C thirteen ninety-one, being a borrowing money bylaw.
Good, great. Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaus. That's motion for second reading and open for discussion and debate. I see Counselor Pressy.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Not, not really a comment right now, but more just a question for council. We've had discussion, we, what we've directed so far for to happen next year is half of this to go into reserves, to build those up, and half to go towards tax relief. That being said, we haven't really had a discussion of is, what's our plan in the long term? Is that something we're going to do for a couple of years till we've repaid it back our stop loss, and then change our strategy? Are we going to do something different in year two, or three, or four of this? I'm just, just kind of curious what people are thinking they want to do with this extra increased cash flow, not just in twenty nineteen, but also in twenty twenty, and what us and future councils should maybe do with it.
Thanks, Counselor Pressy. Any discussion or debate or comments to Counselor Pressy's point? I would say from my perspective anyways, I think at each fall, when we do budget discussions and deliberations for the upcoming year, at that time, I would certainly assess what the community's needs are and desires, and would consider how best to satisfy those, given the full range of tools that we might have at our disposal, which would include any reserves we might build using this, or reserves that might exist. As, yeah, so I, I guess I wouldn't at this stage be interested in constraining our decision-making, or my decision-making. I think we have the full, full opportunity to discuss that each fall, when we, when we discuss the upcoming year's budget. But that's certainly my perspective. I don't know if others had any, or if there's any other discussion or debate on the motion. I don't see anybody else ringing in. And so, Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor Given. Every year, something new comes up. There's challenges, whether we have lack of funding from our provincial bodies or federal funding. Those are things that are just uncertain, and I'm, I'll be looking forward to having some flexibility with that money that we have or will have. So as for a topic of where we're going to spend the money, I don't think I have a number one goal at this point. We'll see what happens in the near future.
Okay, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would say this is a big flexibility for us to grow in the next few years. We can talk every year. We can, my feelings are we should raise our reserve more, if we could, depend on the, how the economy does and how the government funding, like Jako, Kavanaugh told said. And I'm quite with favor too, and I see the big flexibility to given us the next ten years to grow the city and reserve fund more.
Thanks, Counselor Minhaus. Is there anyone else that wishes to enter the discussion? Seeing nobody new ringing in, then we'll call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. With three opposed, we'll move on. Counselor Minhaus, I think you've given us a second reading. Sorry, you'll just have to get your microphone back on after we've gone through the discussion and debate. It's clicked out of the cycle there.
All right, there you go. Thank you. I give the third reading bylaw C ninety, C thirteen ninety-one, being borrowed money by law.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaus. Open for discussion, debate on third and final reading. Counselor Pressy?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A question for management before I make the comment I want to make is, well, two questions for management. Is, first of all, could you refresh our memory about what we currently have in the financial stabilization reserve?
Sure. We just happen to have the likely right person sitting literally next to, on my right hand here. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So as at the September thirtieth unaudited financial statement that was presented first through committee and then to council, there was a balance of nine point seven million in the financial stabilization reserve.
Awesome. And then a second question, if I may? So that reserve is governed by policy three thirty-eight, which is a council-approved policy, which lays out not just what that reserve could be used for, but also gives a target amount that we should have in that reserve. Management, with your understanding of policy three three eight, how much is the council, council set target for that reserve right now?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The policy states that it, it should be, shall be no more than ten percent of the operating requirements of the current year. In two thousand and eighteen, that was approximately sixteen point five million dollars. So as you see, we're a little short.
Counselor Pressy, you said you had a comment that you wanted to make after those questions?
Yes, just, please give me one second if you will. Awesome. I just want to, I just want to point, point out that what we're doing here is we are significantly lowering our reserves right now, which increase our exposure to risk. Right now, our reserves are already significantly below the council-set target of where those should be. And I know we've had some questions about, is it appropriate target? What, what should we do with our reserves? But, that being said, it's, that's a conversation we haven't had yet. And so we're significantly mitigate, we're significantly lowering our ability to navigate risk in the short term while we do this. The other thing we're doing with this is for three decade, for three decades, we're gonna be paying, we're gonna be having less capacity to borrow, to take advantage of future, of future opportunities and mitigate future risks. We're gonna be paying twenty million dollars more for this. Again, as I've said every time, I think that refinancing could be a good strategy. I'm really grateful for administration to find it and bring it forward to us. I'm really grateful for administration to find it and bring it forward to us, but there's significant risk attached, and there's very significant cost for three decades that we're going to be bearing here. I think that this is something we shouldn't be taking without a very clear strategic purpose to do it. And as, and I think that as the discussion today showed, we don't know what we're doing with it beyond a year. This is $20 million, and right now, we've only got a plan for it for the next year. And I don't think that that's a strategic way to spend $20 million. So I'm going to be voting no. And once again, that's just a no for now. If we could come up with a strategic way to do it, I'll be very, our thing to do with this cash flow, I'd be very excited. But for now, till we have that, I'd be voting no, and I hope some of my colleagues will vote no with me.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. I see Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm in favor of what it is we're proposing to do here, and I understand that there needs to be a plan about what we're going to do with the benefits that would accrue as a result of making this change. But for now, I'm satisfied that the, the number one reason that we did look at this had to do with improving our cash flow. So step one is the improvement of our cash flow. And we now have the time, since this is something that we're going to be looking at over a period of 30 years, we do have the time within the next year to come up with a stronger strategy for what to do next. But I'm very much in favor of our first step. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just want to echo Counselor Bressi's comments. It's, you know, it's been a while since we did budget when this was really hot, but since then, I've had a lot more people in the community tell me that they don't like this idea, they wish there was more conversation about it. So I didn't support the first motion. I won't be supporting this one, just because I think, you know, when I look at the bigger picture of this too, as much as I like the, the cash flow and the tax relief it creates today, I don't like the $20 million gap it leaves in our community over the next 30 years. And that's $20 million, it's just really, in my opinion, to throw away costs. There's no value to it. It's going to interest costs, it's not adding anything new to the community. Having said that, if I guess if it does go through, which I'm assuming it probably will, I do agree with Counselor Palat, I want to have a more robust conversation about our, about what we're going to do with our reserves and a plan about our reserves. Maybe we need to have a five to 10-year plan about reserves to get them to where our peers are around the province, because right now, they're quite low. Or a conversation about what are, what are reserves even for? Maybe we have more than we need, I don't know. But we haven't had a real good conversation on reserves, so I'd like to have that at some point as a council, and so maybe that's something we can adopt, put a strategic planning.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Any other discussion or debate? Not seeing anybody else ringing in, into the queue, then we will call for the vote on third reading. Please vote. No, this is a motion for third reading. First reading actually happened prior to Christmas. Okay. I think we've got, I'm looking for one more vote, just to make sure that council, that registered on your pad. Thank you. That's all the votes cast. That motion carries, and that concludes our business with respect to bylaw C-1391. I don't believe we have any items under reports this evening, and so that should take us into committee business, starting with item 9.1, the Community Living Committee meeting from way back in December 18th. Counselor Bressi, I think you were stepping in as deputy chair of that meeting.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Given, for about half a meeting, Counselor Palat and I were alone, and we didn't get into much mischief, so council should be proud of us. To start with, I would move the council approved the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt the minutes? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi?
Great. And then, we had some great conversation about 2018 neighborhood enhancement grants. So this program the city runs to partner with community groups that want to do something to enhance their community and their local, their local area. These are matching grants, so if an organization gets a grant, they need to put up at least 50% of their resources to move forward with their project. I know this has, this program has achieved great things in our community in the past, and I look forward to seeing what it achieves in 2019. So with that being said, I would move that council award the 2018 neighborhood enhancement grants as recommended by committee.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. And so, council members, obviously, you will have seen that the details of that are in our council package, that's available to the community as well, and so, open for discussion and debate on Counselor Bressi's motion to move the committee recommendation. Not seeing anybody ringing in, and I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes, other than the fact that you didn't get into any trouble?
I said not too much trouble. Yeah, we had, it was a good meeting. A few things I'll highlight is from the director's service update. I thought some encouraging numbers came out of the East Link Center, where during the anniversary sale that it held at the end of November, beginning of December, it had $664,226,000 in sales, and that is, was up $157,000 from 2017. So coming out of budget, it's great to hear one of our facilities that spends a lot of money, as finances improving, but even more than that, I think $157,000 more spent in it shows the endorsement of our community that what's going on there is really working, and they want to spend more time there. So I was really encouraged to hear that. Two other pieces of business was the Peace Country Historical Society wrote to the city asking about the cataloging of historical assets in the community. And we've got administration doing some work to circle back with them and eventually come back to committee and help us figure out, do we need to be doing more for our historical sites here in city limits? And then also, just some work that committee tasks, tasks administration to do, has to do with community facility funding. And this came out of the budget time, where there was lots of talk about pickleball, and we were talking about, do we want to fund it or not? And there was talks about, maybe there should be an expectation of gifts and kind, maybe there should be an expectation of regional funding before we do that. And at the committee level, we had a discussion of, if we're going to have expectations like that, maybe a good, be good to have policy to that effect. And both to give some clarity to management and, management and groups when they approach us about what will be expected, and also to go to regional partners and show, hey, we're serious about, we'll be, we might be willing to fund regional facilities that aren't necessarily within city limits. So right now, administration's doing some work to figure out what that policy might look like, and they'll be bringing it back to committee, where I hope something comes before council eventually.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. We'll move on to 9.2, the Corporate Services Committee meeting from December 18th, and I would look for a motion to adopt that set of minutes. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council approved the minutes from the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, December 18th, as presented.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
We have one motion coming out of that meeting, and then I'll go into some of the items that we discussed at the meeting. So we have Aqua Terra Dividend Declaration. The recommendation is council direct the mayor to sign the unanimous consent for discretionary dividends, as requested by the Aqua Terra Utilities Incorporated, on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Open for discussion and debate. I see Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. A question, how much for either management or maybe the mayor knows, in front of us, council has a letter from Aqua Terra saying exactly what these dividends will be. That didn't come through a public agenda at all that I could find, though. So I'm curious, are those numbers meant to be in confidence right now? Or did I just miss them somewhere, or they didn't get into a public agenda? Just trying to figure out, is the public entitled to those numbers right now, or are we?
It's entitled to those numbers. I think it did not hit the, the agenda to be able to make that meeting. It was a bit of a walk-on from, you'll see the letter was dated December 18th, and the committee was December 18th, so I don't think it had a chance to make it into sort of the formal agenda prep at that time. That's why it's here for council members' information, to ensure that council members saw it, and would absolutely be part of a public discussion, for sure.
So I'm, I'm just curious how, maybe it's by due to this motion, or maybe it's something else, but how do we make this, how do we make sure this document becomes public? Because if we just pass this motion as is, I don't see how it gets on the public record in a way people would usually find it.
I think we can certainly incorporate into the minutes of this evening's council meeting, along with this agenda item, so it would be there. So for future reference, if we need to point anybody to it, it would be there as the minutes.
Awesome.
Okay.
Mayor Given, did you want me to announce the numbers?
No, by all means, we can absolutely go through and, and cover the detail of the, of the recommendation from the Aqua Terra Board of Directors.
So the city's portion of the mandatory dividends was 1.808 million and $50. Discretionary was 1.522, $813,000, for a total of $3,330,863 on top of that. And do you want to go through their other partners?
Yeah, might as well, just for, for reference.
Just for reference, the County of Grand Prairie's Aqua Terra dividends mandatory was $398,100. Discretionary was $325,201, for a total of $723,301. And the last partner that we have in this organization is the Town of Sex Smith. Their mandatory was 1.94,250. Discretionary was $149,224, for a total of $343,474.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So I think we still have the motion as made by Counselor O'Toole. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel, Counselor O'Toole, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, Mayor Given, we have a usual audit plan, and we had the couple individuals from our finance company, Fletcher Mudrick, Devin Wardley, and Amy Richards, who were there to present and discuss the audit plan. And we had questions from the committee, and we just wanted to hear what they had to say, what they had from last year, and what they were going to be looking at in this year's audit. And we also had a Corporate Services Director, Susan Walker, gave a service, actually, that's not true, Horatio Galanti, and Mike Phillips gave the Corporate Services verbal update, and, and we went through that. So thank you.
Great.
Good catch on my part, eh?
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And that'll take us to 9.3, Council Committee of the Whole. I would look for a motion to adopt that set of minutes as presented. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we, that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate about the accuracy of the minutes? Do they reflect what happened at the meeting? Or are there any errors or omissions? Not seeing anybody ringing in, then I'll ask for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi?
And then, I would move that council approve the 2019 community group funding as recommended by Council Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. So the motion to recommend, to approve as recommended, open for discussion and debate. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to propose an amendment to Counselor Bressi's motion, and that would be to add a total of $4,070 under the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance's contribution from the city for community group funding, which would bring the grand total of our, I guess they're dipping into the surplus funding of 2019, to $60,000. Speaking to this motion, I'd like to commend council for, for really diligently working hard and finding a way to right a wrong and put $110,000 back into the Grand Prairie Youth Emergency Shelter Society, at the same time, adding positions to the support council, and still not having that impacted to the tune of $150,000. So I really think council really dug in and made some really awesome choices and some decisions as far as breaking down the community group funding. The reason I'm requesting this $4,000 is based off of the recommendation that was given to council from our administration and our community group funding packages, and it states that the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance provides a vital service to the city and the region. Section 60 of the Municipal Government Act gives municipalities direction, control, and management of the bodies of water within the municipality. The MPWA provides support and planning to protect these bodies of water. The recommendation is based on 20 cents per capita. At the current rate right now, I know council meant well, but it's currently at $10,000, but that works out to the equivalent of about 14 cents per person that we're contributing to the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance to ensure that our water body, our collective water body in this region feeds us clean and protected water, and that they develop plans and strategies that we can react to and adapt to, to ensure that future generations have access to that clean water for only 14 cents a minute now, or for our person. In comparison, we are giving $108,000 to the Grand Prairie Support Council, and although I find sports to be important as a tourism driver and stuff, the equivalent of that is $1.56 per person. So we are saying that it is 10 times more important than the health and viability of perhaps our future's greatest resource, which is the access to clean water. This is a small ask. It's only $4,000, and it's going to ensure not only that the Mighty Peace Watershed can continue to move forward with their, with their plans and their processes, but also it will set a precedent for the other stakeholders around the board. We have been a part of the MPWA for the past 10 years. They have produced many products for us. The State of the Watershed Report, the Integrated Watershed Management Plan, which is currently in production. They have helped us with the Wapiti River Watershed Management Plan. They educate schools, and they also act as an advisor on the Water North Coalition. There are many things that the MPWA does for our community, and many products that help to ensure the sustainability of our community's future and access to clean drinking water. For $4,000, that's, that's a big deal, and it actually falls in alignment with what management's recommendation was, which was 20 cents per person, per capita. So I beg and I implore council to see the reason in this request. I'm not asking to take away from anything or to add anything. It's $4,000 from our surplus funding, and if I need to, please direct your attention down to the counter in front of you. There's a nice rainbow-colored sheet of our strategic plan for 2019 to 2022, and the top three things that it says at the top three pillars of what our plan is doing is contributing environmental, financial, and social. We set this precedent now, the other stakeholders around the table, rural municipalities, other urban municipalities, First Nations groups, forestry, oil and gas, agriculture, fisheries, Aqua Terra, they're going to see the reason in it, and it might actually add more, that they can have another person on staff, that they can help to do the water monitoring. It might mean more programs and projects that the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance can do, and it will help to ensure future provincial funding to this organization. So for all those reasons, I request that we just bump up that a little bit to 4,000, to the tune of $4,070, to a total of $60,000 from surplus funding. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So that motion is for an amendment to that one specific item, and so we'll have discussion and debate on the amendment as proposed by Counselor Thiessen. Is there any discussion or debate on Counselor Thiessen's amendment, which would have the effect of adding $4,070 to the Mighty Peace Watershed funding for 2019? I don't see anybody ringing in on Counselor Thiessen's motion. I will call for the vote. Please vote. I'm looking for one more. Thank you. That's everybody, and that motion does carry. And we will move on to the main motion as amended. Is there any discussion or debate on the main motion to approve the community group funding as amended? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. And was, that was, I think, the only item of business for that Council Committee of the Whole meeting, and so that'll take us to our last committee meeting of this agenda. Item 9.4, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting from January 8th. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, January 18th, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton, and I think that was January 8th.
Oh, yeah, 8th. Sorry, my.
We haven't got to. We haven't got to the 18th yet. But any discussion or debate on that set of minutes, other than the date? Are there any errors or omissions to amend before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, anything to highlight in that set of minutes?
Sure, just a couple of quick things. We had a director's service verbal update in regards to many things that are happening within this portfolio. The Candy Cane Check Stop was completed in December. And it was a very successful campaign with over 1,000 toys collected for local charities. Engineering Services has nearly completed the work on the Richmond Industrial Storm Pond. And at that time, on January 8th, transportation had reported that the plow tucks were applying ice control on Priority One roads and that the city crews were working on Priority One and Two roads with wind drill removal. And I would think that with the warmth weather, everybody would agree that the snow removal has been very successful. As well, we had a verbal update in regards to the Parkside Inn. And there was an item added to the outstanding items list as a result of that discussion in regards to a listing of physical repairs and improvements that were requested at the Parkside Inn, rather, and that those would come forward to a future committee meeting. And as well, we had a discussion on the signed bylaw review, which was earlier on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. I think that handles all of our community business. We had no items of correspondence. And I don't believe we had any delegations, other than the ones that were here for the public hearing. And we have no notices of motion this evening. And so I think that takes us to council member reports. There were a couple of council members that let me know ahead of time that they had some reports. And I think we'll start first the Grand Prairie Public Library Board. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. We did have our board meeting on the 8th of January. And we welcomed two new members to the board appointed by this council, Deb Normington and Nick Wright. It was a productive meeting. Nothing spectacular for me to report at this point, but I would like to say that the board expressed their great appreciation for the amount that was contributed to their budget through our group funding decisions. Although they didn't get everything that they had asked for, they did get their first increase in three years. And they're very appreciative of that. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. I think next up was the Community Futures of Grand Prairie Region. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Last week, the Community Futures Board held their annual strategic planning session. During that time, we identified successes from 2018 as well as room for improvement in 2019. I think in the near future, that organization will look to meet with council and update council as a whole. But I can tell you that one of the priorities for this organization going into 2019 is to highlight or do a better job of highlighting the programs that are available, whether it's people who are looking to start new businesses or looking as a potential funding source. Community Futures offers many services, some for a fee and some in conjunction with other organizations. And I look forward to council hearing the many things that the programs that they are working on. And I look forward to the community also and the region having an opportunity to potentially take advantage and opportunity of many of these programs. It was a great meeting. And there will be more things in the near future for council to see. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. And then we'll move on to Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. Counselor Thieson.
Well, I think I might have talked this one to death already, but I might as well give you guys an update on some of the meetings. That, well, no, a little bit of money always goes a long way. So we had a meeting on December 12th. We had an update from Kayden Wilcox, a board member from Alberta Environment Parks, talking about regional and subregional planning. I said currently, the Wapiti River Watershed Management Plan has taken a pause in its final stage of the plan because of the nautical development and their significant demand for water. So there's currently a steering committee seeking input from AEP. And once they get that, they will proceed to the community. And we're working in line with Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. There was a question that I brought up based off of Counselor Platt and Counselor Ressi's, I guess, attendance at the Wetlands Workshop that was hosted by Mighty Peace Watershed. And I asked Mr. Wilcox if we could keep the funds directed in our region for wetland reclamation. And he said that currently Wander Watch is now the lead for the wetlands project in the region. Currently, all the money is being sourced to Ducks Unlimited. But they are looking to the government of Alberta and to departments to look into restricted funds for repairing restoration through Alberta Environment Parks to better facilitate wetland repairs across the province and in the regions where they need to happen. So not just where one organization is doing the work. So hopefully, this will see more of the funds being directed in the Peace Region and around the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. And they are also in the process of creating a wetlands construction guide for municipalities and all interested parties as well in line with this. Also, we had an update on our transboundary agreements with the Northwest Territories and the fish monitoring program. And those discussions are continuing. And I'll have more updates as the year progresses. Site C conversations have been undertaken with BC. And we are working on a transboundary agreement there as well. And the Dunn-Vegan Power Project is still in its deferred status as requested by the board. We then undertook a review of our old strategic plan and undertook a review of our new strategic plan for 2019 to 2022, of which we had a board meeting on January the 8th. And that will be coming forward to a board meeting for, I guess, its ratification, for us to all approve it sometime in February. And that's all my updates for now. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Is that all your updates, other than Peace Library System?
Well, that's all my updates for the watershed. But I do also have Peace Library Systems. And just a quick update, you might all be interested to know that with the dissolution of Grand Cache unfolding into the MD of Greenview, Peace Library Systems has now accepted the Grand Cache Library as its 46 Peace Library Systems member. And in so doing this, the Grand Cache Library Board, which sat under the Yellowhead Agreement, I believe, dissolved on January 1st. And the MD of Greenview is in the process of establishing its own library board to govern the Grand Cache and the Bolt Libraries. And this should take place sometime today, is according to the email that I received last week. When the MD council does the third reading of their bylaw to establish a library board, then their council must appoint members to our board. And as a result of the situation, the Grand Cache Library Board shall be closed until the new library board is appointed and a contract is in place with the school division, at which point they will fully come into the fold of the Peace Library Systems. That is all.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. I think that was all the reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions. And so we'll go to council member roundtable. And we'll start with Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I had a very busy day today with the Arctic Winter Games International Bid Committee coming to Grand Prairie and seeing the venues that we have and talking to the people. And I left my actual sheet of what I did over the last month. But what I will tell you is I went to the Lori Festival here on the weekend. It's an East Indian celebration, one of three that they celebrate throughout the year. Overwhelming success, once again. It's great to see the young people and the seniors and all the people coming to be part of the celebration. I also, like I said, I attended the bid committee today. And I was at the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum this morning. And it was very interesting to see that there was a photographer crew. They were filming some videos for Alberta Tourism as part of enhancing the smaller communities and the unique communities that we have in Northern Alberta to show off what they have in their communities and municipalities. So I know personally, I've been bugging tourism people for years on the Alberta side, that we don't need to see the parks in Jasper, Waterton, and Banff as much as we would like to show off places like teepee creek and Grand Prairie and that. So I think maybe we have gone forward a little bit. And we will see some airtime on our local channels and our provincial channels to show off what we have up here and be proud of it. So once again, I want everybody to cross their fingers for the next three weeks. And hopefully, we'll get that 2022 bid for the Arctic Winter Games. Thank you.
Counselor Ressi.
Thank you. Just before Christmas, I attended the Crime Prevention Annual Open House. And that was a great event where I got to say goodbye to our manager, who's now the Eva Lodge CIO. And that was appreciated, being able to do that and seeing how she's grown that department. But also, a highlight for me was every year, some awards are given out to citizens here in Grand Prairie who enhance community safety and help with crime prevention. And this year, it had to do with, you will remember that back in September 2016, a single shot was fired at the Prairie Mall. And due to legal cases not being resolved yet, there was no recognition able to be given to these, to citizens that were involved in that until now, because all the court cases are finally resolved. And three awards got given out to some remarkable people. There was Annalise Recowitz, who, when the shot fired, she saw, she was with some young girls. And she took charge of them and made sure they got to cover. And they got to the parking lot safety. So thought about these children who weren't her own instead of herself. And then there was Chris Sibley, where there was a gentleman that got shot in the leg. And before the scene was secure, he was in there tying off his leg with his tie and providing internal pressure, and that saved this guy's life. And there's also Lucas Stoffer, who was working for security for Prairie Mall and stayed way, 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 way past his shift after making that initial 911 call and helping get the scene organizing and helping triage people. It was incredibly helpful to RCMP as they made sure the scene was secure and they got the evidence they needed. So it was great to be able, that was an event that I know some people who were in the food court when that shot went off. And that's a life-changing event for those people that really had an impact on them. So it was great to hear not just the impacts of it, but also to see some of our citizens who went above and beyond during that. So that was special for me to happen to drop in during those awards that I didn't even know were happening. It was a great surprise.
Thanks very much, Counselor Ressi. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Not too much to report. Had a lot of coffee dates, a lot of phone calls with different citizens over the past couple of weeks and post-New Year's. But I just wanted to send out a shout out to all of our dedicated staff and counselors and just the great, wonderful team that came together to, you know, make sure that our bid for the Arctic Winter Games 2022 went over amazingly awesome. It was actually quite refreshing to see a majority of council there, a majority of community groups there, and a majority of blue shirts all on the second floor and throughout the Eastlink Center today. There's lots of great conversations to be had. And really, just want to commend the committee that is looking to try to get the Arctic Winter Games here. Our bid committee, they worked extra hard. And this organization really pulled it all together. So it was awesome to be a part of that personally. And thanks to everyone who took part. Hopefully, we will get the Arctic Winter Games bid. But I'm sure we'll find out soon enough. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just highlight that I attended, just before Christmas, my first community advisory board on homelessness meeting. Very pleased to have been appointed to that board as a liaison to the city. And very impressed with the amount of dedication to the cause that's demonstrated by the people who are members of that committee. And I look forward to working with them in the future. I believe that they have the cause at heart and are doing the kinds of things that will continue to make a difference for the homeless in Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Given. For me, I guess my highlight was also, I think Counselor O'Toole mentioned already, but the Lori event on the East Indian Festival. It was this past Saturday. I always love going to events. You don't see a lot of events now where families are engaged. And it was nice to see the kids and the dancing. And the hospitality was excellent. The food was great. So it was just a nice evening to be part of. So thanks to that community for inviting us.
Thanks very much, Counselor Platt. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you. With things quieting down a bit over Christmas, I was able to do quite a bit of volunteering, which was really fun. One thing that I did was with actually crime prevention. They, on December 20th, had GP Heat at Prairie Mall, which is Help End Auto Theft Program. So we got to go around and tell people to make sure that their, all their wonderful presents that they purchased elsewhere are secured and out of sight in the parking lot, that sort of thing. Got to draw for a couple of prizes there, so that was fun. And I also would like to take this opportunity just to give a little shout out to the fantastic facility that we have in Wapiti Nordic Trails. So they're just south of town, out of the city, of course. But I spent a lot of the weekend there with my niece and her team from Foothills, who were competing to qualify for nationals for our biathlon. And there was a lot of comments, more of her team came up this time than last time. So my house was a little more full this time than last time. Not all of them stay, but it was great to have a few of them there. But the comments that I heard from the parents who had brought kids up were how fantastic a facility it is. And I know that it was mentioned, and I don't know if it was actually toward or not, but it was mentioned for the Arctic Winter Games bid. And it truly is world-class. Everyone was very impressed this weekend. So that's a shout out for our neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. It was kind of holiday season. I did quite a work in our own community, but other than that, it was quiet time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Not a lot to report that wasn't already mentioned, other than echoing someone else's thoughts in regards to the community support for the Arctic Winter Games. I sat as the community support chair on the bid committee. And I can tell you, between city staff and surrounding municipalities' support and community support through nonprofits and various organizations, our community support is second to none. And although we always know Grand Prairie gets behind things, this was an opportunity for us to highlight many new things since the last time that games were in Grand Prairie. And lots of familiar faces of people that worked on the games last time came back out and stepped up. And the stories that you recall from past games and past meetings and the people, familiar faces that you see over time that you haven't seen in many years. One of the, one of the stories last time was I was pregnant during our trip to Yellinif when we went to get the bid. So it's kind of interesting, you know, to see people. And you realize how quickly time goes. But, you know, I really want to thank everybody who was part of that bid process. And I'm very optimistic that we have, we absolutely did a great bid. I wanted to thank the co-chairs, Owen and Jody Lewis, for outstanding job and the time and the effort that they put into this. And best of luck. So thank you to everyone.
Absolutely. I'd echo that comment about the Arctic Winter Games. But a great group of volunteers that have put together absolutely the best reflection of our community that we could ever hope for. I'll just cover a couple of items, and I won't go back to before Christmas. But I will mention a New Year's Day celebration that I know other members of council also attended. Archbishop Pedepaw is looking to start a new tradition by hosting a New Year's Day levy, which was basically, if I was going to call it something, was an open house. But I think the idea is that basically welcoming the community to come in and celebrate on New Year's Day by flinging open the doors to the chancery office. And so I know a couple of other council members, certainly Counselor Ressi and Counselor Thieson I saw there, were able to go by and appreciate Archbishop Pedepaw opening his offices to the community to come in and see and celebrate the start of a new year. On Tuesday, the 8th, I had an opportunity to welcome the new mayor of Sexsmith, Kate, here to City Hall, as we sat down and talked about regional issues and just got to know one another a little bit more. There's very few of us that have had to go through as many elections as she has in the last little while. She went through, obviously, a municipal election once as a counselor, went through a nomination around the provincial election, and then has gone through another election as mayor. And so it was great to catch up with her about all the action that's happening in Sexsmith and some of her plans as she and her other new council colleagues, because Sexsmith Council also has two new counselors from their recent municipal election. So it was great to sort of make that connection and talk about how we might work together going forward. And then later on that week, I had an opportunity to speak about council's 2019 plans and our 2019 budget to a couple of different organizations. The first was the Probus Club that met on Wednesday morning. And the second was the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie that met on Friday at lunch. It was a pleasure to update both of them on the plans that council has looking forward and the significant work that we're doing with respect. and the significant work that we're doing, uh, with respect to the city's budget and the twenty nineteen, uh, property tax reduction. And, uh, with that, I think those are all the items that I wanted to highlight, and we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.